Could we get, should everyone stay off of?
I think, are we all in? Oh, no, we're missing Councilmember Lovett. You heard her name, so under the online. Do we have anyone online right now?
We have Mr. Davis who's front staff.
All right, so we can go ahead and get started. Call the order, the committee, a full meeting at 5:31. First up is good to the order, and I'm gonna first get it off in here. So she had an introduction today.
So, good evening, council members of the community. In front of you, you will see our housing action plan kickoff. But more importantly, our new plan, Naomi, who joined our team not quite two weeks ago, who will be concentrating on long range planning. She is our three year LTE to help us catch up. And so I wanted to let her introduce herself. Naomi, you can introduce yourself to council. Thank you so much, Naomi.
So, it really is a pleasure to be here and it's a pleasure to be working for Laura. She's well respected amongst the community with plans. And so I would like to say that first. And that's the biggest reason why I decided that I'd like to come work here is because I have a lot to learn from her. And also meeting Cynthia when I went through the interview, it was just a wonderful experience. I was just in love. So I really am excited about being here and serving Duval. And it is an honor to be a public servant for everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you. So happy to have you here.
She is our project manager for this project. I think he knows how exciting about this. And you'll see a little bit later in the senior council meeting that we'll talk maybe just a couple seconds more. But we're actively in the surveying, not just sort of surveying, certainly monkey, but also going down the industry and talking to people as well. We're creating advisory ground as well. So we kicked off, and so the next three weeks of survey will be done. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? Councilmember Napper, did you have something? I know you emailed that you will have something you want to do right now.
I did. Yeah, sorry, I just, I got the baseball game with the high school. And I'm gonna get to this one every day. So anyway, I'm still like trying to get into gear. So I have been thinking a lot about how we're gonna pay for some of these projects that are coming up. And one in particular, the Third Avenue, it's so much more expensive than I think we originally contemplated. And that project kind of started moving forward several years ago. The concept was that, you know, we potentially break it in phases, even if the lower amount was still a very expensive project with limited ability to get grants. It's not like a mainstream project potentially. Anyway, at the last meeting, you know, we heard that it significantly more than they had originally estimated. And I just wanted to have further conversation about, you know, are there ways to maybe bring in the scope? There are some areas that were just recently done. A sidewalk was just added in a segment of the Third Avenue. I think it was about 10 years ago. And, you know, can we work with some of that? Maybe phase it in? I want to see this project get done. And designing something we can afford and not getting it done would be very sad. And so I would like more specifics on where we think we're going to come up with the money. If we do want to do the whole thing together, just moving forward on something we can't afford and don't have hope of affording feels like a futile. So I would like to have further discussion on phasing, possibly remitting scope. So that was the point I'd seen at the last meeting and how the project was. And so it kind of caught me off guard. So anyway, I asked a few questions and I think those questions were then shared with the rest of the group. And it sounds like they might have a conversation at the next meeting. I don't know how everyone else feels. But I just really want to see the project in the board and.
Oh, did you or I was gonna, I was just gonna say from administration's perspective, this has been a community priority for five years and we will continue to move it forward. It is fully expected that after five years can phasing that the cost has gone up significantly. Construction costs and inflation's adding to that. And we've never not been able to, we've never proposed a project the city couldn't afford to complete. So I want to counsel the rest assured that as we move forward with the planning, scoping and obtaining money for this project that are only get built as we have the funds to build it. That's how we do projects in the city. So there isn't a risk of the city signing up to a project that we don't have the money for. That's just not how we do business. It's not how cities. So we'll be okay there. But we can certainly have a conversation about scope. I know the staff took several hours to respond to this today. So feel free to take a look at that and we can bring it back to the next meeting for further discussion at Cal.
Was there a response already? I got, thank you.
I think there was one sent out. I was scrambling this afternoon, so I didn't get a chance to fully read it. But that being said, we're really good to the order right now. So I think it sounded like City Administrator McNam that this is, there will be a checkpoint soonish, maybe the next month or so? Is this gonna come back or were you wanting to know if for sure council wanted? We can't say, but we can certainly say, yes, that is something we would want to talk about soon at a Cal. Is that the kind of direction you would just want to heads up on or?
Yeah, so this afternoon, that actually we're able to put together a memo that I sent right before the meeting. So I'll check the council distribution email and then see a memo that went out at like five something today. So that answers a lot of the questions that were raised this morning about the Third Avenue project. If there are more questions or if this memo that was prepared by staff generates more interest, please let Mayor Cortem know our process is to notify her that you're interested in having something added to an agenda. And Mayor Cortem and I will work to ensure that an agenda item is placed on either Cal or council.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Is that kind of what you're thinking, you know, how it potentially delivers enough interest? Have it on the next Cal member?
Yeah, I think I haven't seen what the response was yet. So for some reason, my computer isn't actually sending any emails.
Yeah, but yeah, I just like to have another discussion. And one thing that I didn't see though, if a presentation last time was kind of an outline of where the money could come from to pay for it. And I was trying to ask some specifics of that. And so that would be another thing that I think would be helpful to really kind of start putting together where we think we can do it if we do want to move forward. That's also.
And then just to check with our city administrator, was there a date that we would have expected this to come back at some point soon? Or I just wasn't sure if it was already in the works. There might be some kind of timelines. So I just wanted to make sure that lines up or if we're asking for a separate discussion. You're asking for a separate discussion. So the project timeline and the agreement that was reached at the inception of the project was, I believe, and local work director Leshas Pekar making a 30% checkpoint, a 60% checkpoint. And at the 60%, would be another public and resident engagement process. And so we have the 30% checkpoint last council meeting. So what would be next would be into 60% along with assistance engagement process. So this would be an additional meeting to those agreed upon checkpoints.
Thanks. So, Councilmember Isaacson?
Yeah, so that was my last, see, council, so they're giving a bit extra brand it up. Those checkpoints are there, but also I think we have a possibility we're gonna see a lot of that too. That would come at the appropriate timeline as well, see if that's moved forward, you know, getting this committed beyond our point of return. And that third checkpoint is what raised questions. Doing what it's supposed to. And we, you bring up how it's getting on the official agenda. Instead of all of us, you know, like, oh, everything happened today. I gotta get an answer today. And I need to read a memo and talk about it right now. That's what I would ask for. That's the council too. This was, you have less time and ideas, didn't?
Yeah, so yeah.
Probably so.
Read the memo and then just like email me and let me know if that's something you want to have more discussion on before the next checkpoint. Okay, anything else? Oh, sorry, that's my question.
Slightly different topic. I wanted to sort of circle back to something from the last Cal. It was one start, so I was operating fourteen hours of New Street, so I was a little tired of the last one. But one of the, I think that I brought up in that discussion, particularly around the city hall, and it sort of resonates off of what Jennifer just said in terms of costs. And, you know, I struggled with some of these discussions because there's sort of a bottom up and a top down of it. Which we talked about, the analysis of being done in the building, and that sort of addresses deficiencies and things that are needed. We talked about, you know, city hall, and there's a lot of options there in terms of, you know, following Main Street somewhere else. But basically, they're discussing in lots of pockets, not holistically. And coming into that, you know, council relatively new, I know there are strong opinions on both sides. Their staff has views, you know, existing council has been through some of these discussions in the past. And both for myself as well as for some other councils, rather than just covering books with questions. I'm more than happy to dig into it, but I'd love to know a little more about like what was evaluated before. If there is, you know, specific directions. I have a point of view myself in terms of whatever I could see. But everything from, you know, land acquisition conversations to how we consolidate. If there are artifacts that could be pulled, or if there's a specific point of contact either within the council, sort of a one-on-one or mayor and staff to get some of that historical analysis. Because it wasn't necessarily in a brief, you know, going into those art discussions. And that would help me frame up my questions, but also, you know, the wonder I've sort of seen as a gap. And hopefully, we might have been able to address it at one of the retreats was like, what's the vision? And come together on a vision. And then, you know, the question of how to pay for it, then that's one set of questions. If it's we can't afford it, we need to do something else, that's an entirely different set of questions. I don't think we've been sort of poking at the edges instead of approaching some of the expressions.
We can start a meeting with Director Leshas Pekar and Sylvia on that, because he's got all the background, all the details.
Yeah, I think again, it just, you know, you ask better questions and also kind of, I didn't have a kind of idea where the other questions that haven't been asked maybe.
Since we have multiple newer council members, instead of just a one-on-one meeting, I'm wondering is there a way? But it's hard because so many of it is.
Too many people be together.
You know, so I don't know if it's something that at some point, I'm sure there's like links to things, right? That there's some reading we could do. But it would be helpful to hear that. So I don't know if we could schedule that as a separate Cal thing with.
Yeah, because I was trying to avoid putting a lot of extra work on staff. Whereas, you know, I'm more than helping the self-serve if it existed somewhere. But it may, the reality may be, it may be, you know, lots of different tribal artifacts and.
I think the first place to start, especially if there are a couple of the New York council members that want to ask questions would be to have a meeting with Stephen Cynthia and get some high level background. Because I think that's gonna answer a lot of your questions, rather than, I don't think you'll, I guess, as knowing you, you probably won't need to get into the weeds too much once you have a conversation.
Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, but that will move on. Oh, review of regular meeting agenda. Let's see. We have a few things. We have four items on the incentive agenda. Were there any outstanding questions on those that would keep you from being okay with those things on the incentive agenda? All right, great. So we'll go ahead and move on to our first discussion item, our city administrator, economic development policy.
Hi, everyone. And it's coming up right now. I presented a slide. So this really is intended to be an introductory conversation to what we want to do with the economic development funds that were budgeted for the biennium. So we have $125,000 in 2023, even a $125,000 in 2024. And at this point, we don't really have a mechanism for how we might spend those funds externally. And so I really wanted to have a conversation with council today, just about what options exist. And I'm sorry, I didn't bring my glasses in, so I cannot read that. I'm gonna go up to the podium. So at this point, we put together funds in the budget and I can't read it there either. So well, I'll just, I'll go on the line and you can read it. You tell me if it says what it does. So what we've done so far, in addition to budgeting the amounts in the budget, is council member Shaker has worked with our chamber and our business community to identify different projects that the business community here in Duval would be interested in pursuing. We've also had a conversation about our economic development element of our comp plan and the fact that it exists. And there's a lot of good information in that, but we haven't done much work. It kind of got dusty and put on the shelf from the last one we did, the economic development element of the comp plan. So we wanted to put together in the packet of our couple examples of the types of things that we could do to spend this money. And some have significant challenges, some have significant opportunities. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to work through what options you might have and get a little direction. And then right at the next council meetings, I can pursue different options. So the first thing we can do, which is certainly the easiest, is at least easiest to administer, is do internal staff develop projects as directed by council. And that builds on the survey and information that we got from the chamber and from the business community. And I haven't priced those projects, but, you know, it's possible that we could expend, you know, the majority of the money that was budgeted on those projects. One thing we would want to do if we decide to go that way, one, we wouldn't need a policy. But also, we probably would though want to create some tool, an evaluation tool, to give to our business community that after a certain amount of time, after spending those funds, we get some data about whether or not they helped or moved the dial on anything. And so the tool, the evaluation tool would probably be fairly simple to create and administer. But that, I think you would want to pair those together. You just wouldn't want to do these internal projects without then asking hopefully the recipients of the goodwill or the investment, whether or not it made a difference. The second thing we could do, which is some of the things we talked about when we were creating the budget for economic development, is to do a short-term strategic plan. Alternatively, we could do a long-term strategic plan. The challenge there is we want to make sure that we're not stepping on the toes of the comp plan work that is happening right now. So we will be going onto RFP soon on the economic development element of the comp plan. We decided to do kind of a light update of that. But if we do long-range strategic planning, it is possible that those two things will step on each other's toes, the two projects. So you'd probably want to make a choice of abandoning the economic development element if you're gonna do a long-range strategic plan. However, we could hire a consultant to do a short-term strategic plan. And in the packet, I put together, or I put in a packet, the Kenmore Strategic Plan, which I think is pretty well done and is pretty robust. I also included the City of Tacoma Strategic Plan to take a look at. That one is a little less robust and probably costs probably fewer resources by percentage than the Kenmore one, which is, you know, pretty well done. So the advantages and disadvantages of that approach, the challenge again, is that, you know, we'll be doing two things that are kind of the same. The advantage, though, is before spending funds, you have a plan. And that's one of the things particularly I heard from council member Supple is we budgeted without a plan. And part of the conversation tonight is, I don't, if we want to do anything external with it, I don't have direction from council on how they do that. And so the money is kind of sitting there right now. So that's an approach. Particularly in the first year, it would take a fair bulk of that $125,000 to do, to do short-term administration. And that would be another part of the staff are engaged in addition to Director Thomas doing the plan work. The next thing that's fairly easy to administer is micro grant project for nonprofits. So I put together a very small sample of what that might look like. So advantage to this is we already have a similar project or similar program for our human services grants to receive grants from the City of Duval and process for doing that. So we could use that process and develop micro grants for nonprofits to engage in business and tourism activity. So under Washington state law, that's fairly easy to administer. We'd want to create a policy and, you know, decide on grant amounts to go that route. And the challenge is to find the sweet spot for how much those micro grants would be to make a difference. And you'd also want to create an evaluation tool for that as well. So in the packet, I put together a sample, a sample concept for nonprofit micro grants to support economic development and tourism with kind of the eligibility requirements that the nonprofit must have a mission that closely aligns with one of the following: to create, retain, or expand business, community focus, create, retain, or expand small businesses by offering a program to other small businesses, promote the City of Duval's visitor destination, or enhance the City of Duval's economic standing and reputation as a community that supports innovation, entrepreneurship, and business development. So that, I think, we could do, we could administer relatively easily. The last thing that I kind of marked up as a concept that is difficult to do is micro grants for businesses. So under Washington state law, there's prohibition about, that restricts cities from giving money to corporations kind of under the philosophy of give them public funds. There's a way to do it, or there are multiple ways to do it, but they're highly regulated and would require some changes by ordinance or code. One of which, one way to do it is to create an investment district. So you create a regulatory investment district in the City of Duval. You could offer money to businesses that way. There are a couple of other funding mechanisms, but they're difficult to administer and have somewhat complicated auto trail around them. The other question is, at small grant levels for businesses, the question would be, can you move the dial meaningfully for business in the amount of a micro grant? They're probably good templates for it, but they come out of ARPA funding. So the City of Boffle did this really cool micro grant project where they have these little pop-up shops. And they were $5,000 micro grants to do kind of like what you would see at a festival. But they were, the funding mechanism through those to fund those for ARPA. And they were, they were set for kind of specific times and specific city-related activities. But they went to the business community. So that's another option that we have. And so those are kind of the ideas that I wanted to bring to council today for further discussion and some direction when I kind of have an idea of how the council wants to move forward. I can develop a more detailed program for these or a combination of them. But, you know, I want to make sure that when council budgeted the money, that the money gets spent.
I want to clarify a question. I'm sorry, regarding the last one, you know. And just clarifying what the laws were. I'm assuming that there's direct yes or yes in mind. If it was something around, I know we're, you know, discussing beautification projects or things that are direct adjacent but aren't actually transferring funds to the business center, those would still be allowed. It's actually the direct transfer of funds from the city to the business center where you're struggling to run some of those hurdles. But indirect investments that benefit the business community down how there's not necessarily prohibition from that, is that correct?
Correct-ish. And so we want to be really careful when we look at that first bucket of internal staff developed projects that are driven by council, that we assess if the project is benefiting only one business or versus benefiting like an entire district. One thing we might want to do is actually think about the projects in terms of benefiting sections of Duval, benefiting historic and unfound, or benefiting Big Rock, just to keep us away from benefiting one business. But I've had some business owners write to me when they found out that economic development funds got into the budget and asking for specific funding for like a festival at their business or funding a musical act at their business. And a program in the city that you do kind of a wine and walk music is doable. Programming, giving money to one business who hosts four bands is probably not doable. Being really clear about what those boundaries are. And we'll make sure that whatever we do, Daniel will review it.
Yeah, the $125,000 for 2023, what happens if that is not spent or allocated in year 2023? I assume the fiscal year ended 2023, December?
No, it was a biennial amount, so it's $250,000 off. So if we don't spend it, it rolls over. And so, you know, there's a possibility of just doing planning work in 2023, getting the idea of being impactful in 2024. But it doesn't get spent. It just goes back, at the end of the biennial, it goes back into the general.
Councilmember Napper? What have you done with the presentation? So when I look at this, I think, like, what can we get going right now? And what things might require more planning time, more thought? And for me, I think I would be comfortable with maybe getting our feet wet with some of these micro grants for nonprofit. And I'm just thinking of some of the events that we had in town that due to COVID, haven't, we, you know, haven't come back. With the Art and Mind Walk, which I talked to a lot of businesses. They love that. It got people into lots of businesses. It didn't just aid one business. There was the quilt show. That was really a popular event as well. So just to get something going, I think it'd be really amazing to offer maybe some, maybe up to $5,000 these micro grants, just to get something going. And then I do think it might take more thought to come up with a plan. $250,000 is a lot of money. And maybe, maybe to get, looking through the plan that was from the comp plan in 2015. I think we all, I mean, I thought there were some great ideas in there. And then the strategic plan, the economic development plan that was done, what was it, like 10 years ago or 18? It was pretty old, but the ideas were fantastic. So maybe we could have a workshop where we kind of pull some of those ideas out. Maybe have another, you know, additional brainstorming and then go through an evaluation tool of looking at those. And I don't know how long that would take, but for me, I would really need to get some money out there. And then I don't know how long that would take, but for me, I would really need to get some money out there. And then there are some existing events that the businesses have said were great for their business. At least get some money out and then work on a more structured um plan for the, that's kind of right now.
So the art, mind and walk, yeah, I like that. I just wonder how much time it took to do that for that? Cause I would think it was sold in September, right? And what we have five or six months. Who organized it? Who, who put it on the last time?
Volunteers and city staff.
Volunteer the city staff?
There's a nonprofit that I put it together and I, I'm trying to remember which one it was. So there's a new Disney nonprofit that has been on like the quilt show and the art and mind walk. They just, I know the city club does some things, um, but it wouldn't be of planning. I mean, the city provides support, um, so it would be potentially giving these nonprofit organizations a little bit of a infusion of funds.
Yeah, money for advertising.
Yeah, to get it going just because they've lost momentum from COVID.
There are comments, questions, ideas? Councilmember Sheikhan?
Uh, first of all, um, uh, Cynthia, you did a great job on, thank you very much. I went through it in detail and liked the ideas of the line. The uh micro grant for nonprofits, I'm glad to hear that that's, you know, relatively easy to do in the, in the big scheme of things. The micro grant for businesses, I'd love to get that going. And I understand, I understand that there, there's more work to be done there. I personally believe uh we should give that priority. Uh, and I realize there's staff time involved. Uh, I think it's really important for us to get funds out there. As Jennifer was saying, this is one way we can do it in a relatively short period of time. Uh, related to that as well, uh, the current proposal uh proposes five thousand dollars. You're gonna take a twenty five thousand dollar cap. I'd like to see that increased to a ten thousand dollar uh per grant and a hundred thousand dollar cap uh for specifically for businesses. Uh, five thousand, you know, it's tough to get anything meaningful done with five thousand these days. Uh, ten thousand, I think that's more, you know, more possibility of getting something actually meaningful, you know, meaningful done, especially in the short term. I mean, we can make these, you know, we can make these grants potentially this summer, but that doesn't mean the businesses are actually going to be able to, to respond to summer and get, you know, whether they're going to use those funds for it, they can get that uh or not. Uh, as far as the internal, internal staff build projects, I think there's some relatively low hanging fruit. We can, we can uh do there provided or based on the uh priorities provided by our business community. Uh, and again, I think it's important that we try to do that sooner as opposed to later. Uh, in, in part to show our business community, hey, look, we're, we're doing these grants. Uh, we're doing, you know, this project that you guys suggested was a priority. And by the way, the number one priority was in, I know it's very big, but increase pedestrian friendliness such as safer crosswalks and outdoor dining. That was their number one priority. Uh, and something that we can do along those lines, I think, would be, would be, you know, well spent money even in its own, you know, a relatively small, you know, small thing, but it would benefit at least the, you know, at least our downtown community. And uh, Iran, I s- I see there, so I'm not.
Turn your work.
And it, as sort of, as far as, you know, you mentioned possibility of getting a consultant, uh, I'm in favor of that. Probably not, you know, I wouldn't want him to spend a hundred fifty thousand dollars for a consultant. Maybe cap it at fifty or something like that, maybe. Uh, and I don't even know if that's possible. If it's not, you know, I, I, I don't think there'd be good use of our limited funds, to tell you the truth. I think we can do other things uh ourselves.
Well, go with Councilmember Mercer, I see you're gonna let Mayor all probably go and then if you have some questions.
Yeah, I'll be relatively quick. I, um, you know, I, I think, and this is one of those areas where I think there's some a little bit of verbal app is, is, you know, my impression or understanding is there's an opportunity to sort of hit some of the, the business needs, business asks through the internal developed staff projects. And I think the advantage there is obviously there's new, um, the, the creating a legal structure is going to have both the cost and a time impact in terms of defining that developing it. I'm not saying that that we shouldn't be pursuing that, but I agree, Rick, there's an opportunity to sort of make direct investments in the community, particularly and based on, and, and I know there's, we've even discussed, you know, some of the sharing and how it works and contributions. But given some of what Cynthia had shared in terms of both the potential legal hurdles, but then also, you know, nothing in terms of, I can even think of just creating a, um, you know, the investment district. That's a fair amount of staff work and filings and other things that we need to be done. Um, I would kind of, you know, weigh things slightly differently. The explore the micro grant opportunities is there interest in both the community and then also folks that can do that work. So it's not just in terms of the community, but also, you know, are there volunteers that, that are willing to step up and make good investments? And then, you know, potentially look at some of the internal staff projects that check the same boxes as the micro grants to business while you then sort of we, we explore maybe the best way to approach that. And then I think there is a, a planning piece ultimately as we get into more broadly in terms of how we want to prioritize that bucket. Um, I did hear that it was not, you know, you get out what you put in. So based on the, um, the output and quality of that, it's likely a, a larger investment, potentially not maybe a hundred twenty, twenty five thousand, but we could be in towards seventy five. And that's how I kind of expect like things.
Thank you, Dan. Um, this is a really great conversation. I even want to say on the consultant side, uh, me and Professor, I actually uh came across a business at A W C last year. Be do specific targeted work and seek out businesses to bring into communities. That may be a cost effective way to build business, um, bring new businesses to Duval. So I would recommend potentially having them come get the city council presentation on um what they're working on. Uh, we both pushed that off for quite a while since it wasn't on top of our work plan. But I also want to remind um council um that not that long ago, we received word that our city insurance is going up well over a hundred thousand dollars per year. Um, and that, uh, I would encourage councils, we're thinking about these decisions, to think about that uh major budget adjustment that's going to need to happen um this biennial. Uh, and remind them that that is a general funding expenditure as is this. Uh, so there's a good possibility that we'll have to make major cuts elsewhere um if both of these programs can afford at the same time. Um, so just to be cognizant that um we have budgeted for this and it's really important work, but we also have core commitments to operating the city um and costs that are out of our control that are skyrocketing. Uh, so just as kind of a, not to be down or to, to just um kind of level set and make sure that there is to brought from Councilmember Mercer's point earlier and talking about all the different projects that we have and paying for them, that this is another, um, another example of we've budgeted for it. Uh, but in this case, expenses are coming in much higher uh than originally projected that are in that just as well.
I'll go ahead and chime in and then Councilmember Lovett and I do say, I think we haven't heard from you guys yet. Um, oh, this is tough. I feel like from everything I'm hearing so far and then my own thoughts, we definitely will need another session to unpack a little bit more. Um, but I think this is a good start. This presentation is really great and gives you some good options. Um, so the micro grants for businesses um sounds really challenging. I'm curious, um, I guess like a technical question would be seeing that you have to create a legal structure and there would be a lot of, I'm like adding up hours in my head. Um, legal costs associated with something like this, would this come from the funds we've allocated for this? Or there's some shuffling there where technically it comes from this other bucket, but maybe we needed, you know what I mean? Like that's what I was curious about.
Yeah, so I'll answer that question first. So we pay a little bit of the general fund unless they're associated with specific projects and some are. Um, but this kind of thing would be general funding money. Um, so I guess what I would say is the, i- if I'm, if I'm kind of calculating the costs, the legal structure to create the ability to give grants to businesses is significant. Um, at least, but likely more twenty hours of blue work to do it. Multiple council meetings, you have to embed it in a code or ordinance. Um, so it is not insignificant to undertake the ability to create some legal structure to give grants to businesses.
Can we do this under COVID? Can, can we do it as in COVID? And would that simplify the giving away of money?
So.
It was ARPA then?
Um, maybe. So what you would need to do is then to take the money out of, um, we'd have to do a budget adjustment where you would fund part of it through OPA fun, or ARPA funds, which we've now already expended on uh hiring employees that I'm interviewing next week. So um, you, you could do it with ARPA funding. Um, you'd have to get on it pretty quick because you have to under the ARPA um designate the funds for a specific ARPA covered purpose, some of which was business facilitation, business idea inclusion as a result of the COVID shutdown. So you also, I'd be really clear about um how you're doing it. Um, so yes, in theory, um, but it would require budgeting.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry for what I was saying, but it, it, that specifically has, has to do with this. I mean, I, I would hate to, to, to think that it would be more expensive to go through the uh, the uh creation of the process and all the legal costs. That would be more expensive to do that than the money we want to give away. That's almost what it sounds.
Yeah, I don't want to be a downer, but yes. So I'm gonna, I'll keep going. Nothing is okay. Um, so, okay, um, yeah, I guess when I look at all of these, I, they're, each one has a price tag. You know, whether or not it's something direct, but everything takes staff time. And so I'm just kind of curious going forward. I don't have any hard opinions on it, but you know, one has a bigger price tag than the other, you know? And how does that play into what we want to do? Um, I really liked the idea Councilmember Napa mentioned. Um, so what I'm curious about is there are nonprofits that kind of pulled back with COVID. They may not be the same nonprofits that stepped forward to do it again. So I'd be really curious about saying there are specific types of events that help with economic development that we'd really like to bring back. So how do you reach out and say, who's willing to do it now? It may not be the same group. It may not matter who the group was that did it however many years ago. Um, who's willing to do it now and who fits the mold that we could, you know, I'll give the money to, to make it successful? I think an event where it's all through town and hopefully within corporate different areas, not just downtown, but at Big Rock or, you know, anything else would really have a huge impact to multiple businesses. Um, and so that kind of in a way has, seems to have a big impact while also avoiding all the challenges involved with micro grants for businesses. Another random little thing I think about, you know, when we were talking about the sod improvements or things like that to help, I always start to get worried a little bit too because are we doing something that's going to increase somebody's rent? Or, you know, I mean, that can also happen unintentionally, um, despite our best intentions. Uh, the short, the planning and the internal development project, I would really want to explore more with the community, community and make a really pointed effort to dig in more. I think your survey, Councilmember Shaker, was really great, but some of the feedback made me think there's a little more work to be done here. Um, there was one specific comment wanting to be effective. I'm sure any of these ideas would help some, right? But then it becomes, you know, how do you evaluate that? And the tool that you're talking about, how would we determine this? So um, I don't have one streamlined opinion on, I think we should do this one or that. It's kind of a little bit of everything and I just need to learn a little bit more, but the clock is ticking and we need to figure it out. So I'm curious to learn more about how we could navigate the, as you put it, stepping on toes of the, the economic development, the element. So um, you know, hopefully as we hear a little more of that, maybe something will make sense and we can go that direction to involve some more planning. But I kind of go between those micro grants for nonprofits as well as some of those developed projects that we talked about. I think it would be really beneficial and have an immediate impact and help. So anyways, um, Councilmember Lovett and Isaacson, I think you haven't spoken yet. If you'd like to weigh in, go ahead.
Sure, um, I tend to agree with uh the grants for nonprofit profits and the internal developed projects. Uh, the micro grants for businesses actually, I think, would be tremendously helpful. I totally hear you. I just think that it sounds like it's almost like it's going to be massively kind of uh sort of situation. So my thought is just essentially, how do we get things moving the quickest? And so I would say, looking at the internal staff developed projects, there are things that from your survey, we can do maybe one more round of surveys, we can still relatively quickly, we can earmark a small amount of money, say not greater than twenty thousand dollars, just make immediate actions. Whatever, a lot of pots and there's a couple of things on there, but just things that could overall brighten, brighten to the main street uh atmosphere that we're not going to hurt anyone, we're not going to weed out over our skis and then we're just going to make, you know, good, clean decision based on what that feedback give, but when it's the one you can hear. And uh, I think that's, I think that's worthwhile. I think it's worthwhile to just move the dial, like where we can move the dial. Cause we'd be caught up talking about everything else for another sixty, eight months, ten months, twelve months, you know? Um, so I think if you find places that we know we can spend some of it, not all of it, I do think it makes a big difference. One thing I thought about is there's like all of those unfinished carvings that are sitting in that garage over there. And those are beautiful, you know? And I remember when they went up and seeing them go up like the next batch and you went, oh, that's really cool. And those little things, they do make a big difference. So I'm just gonna, just saying, that's where, that's where my head lands with that. And then, yeah, I think if you could, if there's a way to blanket a tremendous amount of staff time, that there's a way to blanket off around, hey, we've got this money available to do some really cool stuff. You're a nonprofit in our city, come check out our parks, come check out our main street. And whoever the nonprofit is, is interested, that's a win-win is bringing people to the city. So those two are definitely the same for me. Obviously, there's more to kind of dig into, but I'm all for doing stuff where we can do it as soon as we can do it.
Councilmember Isaacson?
Yeah, um, first of all, I, I don't think any of us are business experts. I don't have my other ideas, but my head, I just, I think tomorrow all shit our head over now. We really don't know. And, and, and raising back to why we're getting DARPA funds dedicated, no one really agreed. So um, I don't, I hope what we've done is what, what I like for your mission. What is, how do we pass word to get some money out there? And I would leave, I don't know, doing at least putting our, our good foot forward and then get someone in here with the rest of the money and say, what can we do with it? Well, it may take some time, but that was the idea, was give our money to the city and if they have to do other things, we can do that now, now. And not rush, you know, let's take some time to get this money out here and get back for a buck. And I would be very frustrated if we say, well, you know, we did that and we can use that money to pay our taxes. I would be very, very frustrated with that. I think our whole conversation was let's put general fund aside and not touch it for anything else. If we need to cut something else, I'd be leaning toward that as far as they take us away from our business building. That is why I said all our meetings here. Um, it just, we have current events that are, those are already planned, right? If people put some more money in those, we make it bigger, advertise more. Let's say we're gonna do longer, do all days can be longer, you know, we do the, the, the music festival. Uh, let's make it sort of just three weeks or four weeks, or let's make it two months. You know, those are the, the interest rates right there. Let's go out and say, let's make it bigger because we don't have the time. Put that money there, maybe look fast and get a business development expert on staff or something. Come in with the money, roll it over, come for it, really put a buck on. That's my impulse.
And uh, Mayor and then uh, City Attorney.
Um, so great points, Councilmember Isaacson, you know, expanding what we already have is a surefire way to bring more people downtown and it's a known of it, putting money to advertising, having our community events coordinator on, on staff is going to be very helpful with evaluating those ideas and how we move that forward. Um, Councilmember Levitt brought up the, the wood carvings and signs. And I just wanted to clarify that that is also, that is lack of staffing that stalled that project. So that's actually already paid for and funded um the carvings, but it's a matter of that volunteer committee and having somebody to staff it to finish that project. So when we get the events coordinator on, on board, that's one of the, the key tasks is getting our project done. Um, but that, that definitely wasn't an issue of business or nonprofits. It was strictly an internal staffing issue. So um, I just want to make that clear too, is that there's, there's some of these things that look like they're overlapping, but they're not really. Um, and um, you know, there, I have received feedback from businesses as well regarding some of the grant funding. Um, as well as from. As well as from Congressman Schreier and what we heard in our walk. Um, I won't go into it now, but I'm happy to talk to councilmembers. Offline about some of the things that we heard specifically from our businesses, um, that may be of interest to you.
Sydney, how's your? Um, yeah, so I don't want to foreclose um, any conversation, but I just kind of want to do a touch point on what I'm hearing. One is, um, I think a general consensus to try to build out. The micro grants for nonprofit and maybe you kind of a whole. Project design for that and policy for that. Um, the other thing, and I know most of you are. Seasoned professionals, um, so you probably hate these exercises, but what I could do is mine, the. Um, last comp plan, Councilmember Shaker's um, project list and put up some. Um, you know, butcher paper and do a dot exercise and have you guys all prioritize and and. Um, prioritize some of those projects and then I'll bring it to staff and figure out what we like have capacity to do as well. Um, so we can start getting some of them. Out the door, if you would be interested in doing kind of a prioritization project, I think how?
Yes.
Yeah, and when you're saying like take your back staff and kind of look at it, I will be from that. Would that be where we would get essentially a cost estimate? I think sometimes things down, that sounds like a great idea, but then, oh, you know, just like the business grants has ended up being. A bigger deal to get done. Do you know what I mean? Do you think that we could get even abroad, offsetment on some of the ideas? I mean, yeah, maybe, I presume so. I mean, one of the things is my. Council do a prioritization and have staff do the same exercise at the same time. Of what can we do quickly, easily, like some kind of squad analysis of. Like what what's able to do quickly, what's able to do maybe more happily, but more expensive. So maybe we have staff work on the side, council work on the side, somewhere in between is a match.
Excellent. T-shirt sizing as well as. Small meeting large, how expensive.
Right, yeah.
I understand loving include include my items for like expansion of current events in that sort of analysis. So that there's also the. Like what that looks like. That's a great idea.
Councilmember Shaker?
Yeah, just just so that everybody, I guess remind everybody, the number two priority on business priority was was additional or expanded events. So, so that is obviously a big deal with our with our business.
Yeah, then you have things that um, play into that too, like the banner goals, adding additional banner goals, then fixing ones that are broken. Things like that. So there might be a lot of linked um, internal developed projects that match with that as well and can help. And I always, once we get our staff member, I'm really excited to see what they can do and the takeoff because, you know, for example, with concerts in the park, it's an amazing event. Everybody loves it, though sometimes our business owners up here are like, well, we might get another wave of people, but a lot of times they don't stay open that late. They, you know, they'll pack up early. So I'd be really curious if there is something fun we can do, and I'm sure that new staff member will take it and run with it, like. Even like a punch card people could do or some passport thing or something to get people to visit local businesses, bring it down, redeem it for something down at the concert or, I don't know. Priority seating or something like that, I don't know.
Yeah, along those lines, uh, an idea that we weren't able to bring to fruition, um, due to staffing and COVID. Um, was increased funding for Summer Stage and, um, working with a company to have a QR code so that people could text and donate. Historically, at Summer Stage, it's always been a pass the hat for donations. Um, and the concept was potentially having people do, use a QR code, donate their ten, twenty bucks or what have you to help support Summer Stage long term. And then, um, have a discounted local business. So it could be a dollar, a penny to the belly house or what have you, and have different businesses rotating through. To drive business to those kind of facilities, um. Either before during or after events. Ideally, you know, event nights, they do get slammed. Um, so you, you know, ideally that's spread across a long period of time. Uh, but it does draw awareness to the local businesses for especially those out of town residents that are coming to watch our events. So, um, there's lots of great low income groups, um, can be implemented once we get that staff person on board, uh, that should help drive this too.
Yeah, one of the things that, um, Councilmember Director Thompson and I talked about is thinking maybe a little. Uh, more broadly and more big on, um, uh. What up to ball? Um, so it might be a little late in the season for to make an impact on Duvall Days or Summer Stage. I'm on weekly meetings for those, um. But certainly we have time for some of the fall and winter events to make a difference.
There there was one other item that I think at least a couple of council members touched on. I still like to explore the possibility of using ARPA funds specifically for the uh, uh, small business grants. Uh, and. And I know that, you know, your time, probably probably others to to actually. See how we can shuffle, or even we even can, maybe it's too late, I don't know, but it it was still a possibility. Shuffle things around, shuffle, you know, shuffle something, you know, back into the general fund that's currently in the ARPA fund. Uh, see if we can somehow free up, you know, a hundred thousand or whatever. Uh, to make it easier to hand out these small business grants.
Wouldn't it be helpful to? See, I just want to understand if council is interested in knowing if that's a possibility. Um, because I don't know what kind of work that would be to explore that. So. Is, I mean, we could do like head nods or, I mean, is anyone else, go ahead. Um, so we can certainly do the math on it. Um, at this point. Um, once it was budgeted, I mean, one of the reasons why I'm here today is we started spending that money. Um, and committing that money. And so, I mean, we can find out what hasn't been committed yet, um, because there were some projects associated with it, but, um. Uh, all the positions are being first round interviewed next week. So a lot of them is dedicated staffing. Um, we can look at what we haven't started committing to yet, but. Um, once the budget went through, I made a list on my whiteboard and started check, check, checking, making progress on everything about it. Yeah, so I guess I just wanted to know if any other council members were interested in exploring that or not interested, so.
I would say. Well, it's interesting, if you can give us the numbers, that's all we have. We've got, you know, the development, I've already committed. And it's not that hard a thing, you gotta do it, then, you know, boost it a bit, and it's it's the whole concept is. I don't think we realize micro grants isn't thing to be that complicated, whatever. At least we get the light moving, it's doing something.
So councilmember stuff like, but you nod, no, you're not interested in the.
I'm really curious to see how we're gonna spend about two hundred and fifty thousand, I guess.
And then. Councilmember Isaacson, you'd be possibly interested here. Okay, Councilmember Mr. Are you interested?
Um. I think there's no harm in, you know, once a ballpark, I I'm not that interested in reallocating plans we've already reallocated. We won't do a lot of exercise to get that. Part position place and. I think there'd be a lot more disruptive and sort of plots in that way back, but that that's a discussion we could have, it could come back, but there's. You know, not enough to make a difference, you know, that that's where we said, um, but, but yeah, at this point, I think there are other. Tools in the toolbox that we can work with, and I I think it's definitely an aspirational goal to drive, but I wouldn't necessarily reprioritize.
Um, Councilmember Lovett, are you interested in exploring or knowing if that's a possibility or not?
I'd be interested in just knowing what the number is, but beyond that, I don't. I mean. It really depends on what that number is to narrate and beyond it.
Councilmember Napa?
Honestly, I'm not as interested in uh, direct grants to individual businesses. I I I struggle with, um. Just the role of government and giving individual businesses. Um, I think COVID was kind of an exceptional situation and potentially, you know, there was that soft minded, even with that, I don't know, um. Would be taking, it'd be just moving money around. I I'm just not interested in that. Um, I I like to create a sort of business. A friendly environment for businesses by doing projects that would assist a wide range of businesses rather than. Individual, that's just my personal opinion, so I, yeah, okay.
Um, sounds like we're sort of split, so I don't know, my personal preference would be. I I would agree, I'm not quite as interested in it, just because I think there's a lot of other things we can do to benefit everybody. Um, but if there is a very shallow level that it can just be like, it's impossible, and so like, what's the number, but like. What's the max cap on putting work into that? Just even understand, do you know what I mean? Like, I would never want you guys to put a ton of like hours into researching it. I just maybe that's something our attorney can answer and and our finance director, because I want to be, you know. Where about two, the clock is ticking with transition and stuff, so. Well, let me make sure what the question is that I'm asking. So I can work with our financier to find out what we've committed. And what is left of ARPA money? That's a number that we can come up with and I can report back to council. The second question is, do I ask Daniel to create a a project plan for being able to give grants to businesses? That's a different question. I want to make sure that I'm doing the thing that council wants me to do. I think the second question is actually, is it possible to swap the money essentially, like. All ARPA that's not committed, if council wanted to do that and then replace it with, you know, that, I think that was the other question. The legal answer is yes, okay, for the budget amendment, which you all have certainly the power and authority to do. Okay, so then maybe council just wants to know what the number is? Yeah. Councilmember Lovett?
Yeah, I'd say that's the first thing is really the one, that would trigger anything beyond that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we're, hold on, make sure I understand, so. Uh, so the first thing being to see if it's possible to move the budget around between general fund and ARPA fund?
That, that is doable. It requires a budget amendment, um.
Right, right.
But so, but I think it's predicated on that we already committed all the.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Right. And that's what you're gonna.
That's what I'll.
By hopefully with minimal. No, yeah, well, then I guess it's the follow up question to that, though, if there really isn't support for for. Uh. Doing the small business grants, do we even want to take that first step? I mean, it it's not going to be worthwhile if the council does not support this micro grants for businesses.
I think just really quick, and then I'll, Councilmember Lovett, I I I would just say, it sounds like it's fairly simple to find out the number. And then the number might be what some people need to, I think some of us may prefer not to do it. But I'm not sure that's the majority. I think the number might impact how some people feel about it. Does that sound accurate from what people heard? I know for some it won't matter, but, um, Councilmember Lovett, did you still have something there?
I agree, cover. I mean, I'm more interested just because if there was money hanging around, then you would know that, or like, that would be very basic. That's only if it was super easy to do. Realistically, I'm actually not that interested in that at all. I really focus on the same things I actually said from the get go. So depends on how far we back up the switch. If the switch goes back one more step, then I say, don't even do it at all. Majority all thinks, you know. Categories A and C are more. Then we should probably not waste at all anytime. We think that, you know, there's some interest in D, then get the number.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
City Administrator, yeah, which might be the more pertinent question. You know, we're asking how much is is unallocated, but I'm assuming that you're based on your earlier comment. When the decision or guidance was provided, then council to allocate those funds. It may not actually have been spent, but it's been allocated to something, if that correct, so. So the broader conversation are there willing, things we're willing to take off the table that we previously prioritized with being important?
Um. So my recollection of the budget process is that we did a fairly intensive. Uh, uh, process for prioritizing. How to use the ARPA funds and whether or not we were going to commit economic development dollars this by year. And we vote, we voted it and we made some decisions. Yeah, can you make different decisions? Absolutely. Um. However, once for all sorts of categories, um, of budgeted items, once the budget passed. We started doing the work to expand the budget. Councilwoman Rissupper?
I'm not really, kind of, I'm not really interested in revisiting the past as far as allocating that money. I think we have more productive thing to do. We have, what, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to decide how to spend. Now we're trying to figure out how to allocate more money.
Not on top of that.
So it sounds like there's not strong support for, um, the micro grants for businesses. That being said, it's still a curiosity and it's fairly easy to get the number. I'm sure we can just know that, um.
But ju- just to be clear, I wasn't suggesting taking anything off the table. Uh, the only thing I was suggesting is shuffling funds around. We had the general fund bucket, we have an ARPA fund bucket. And it's possible to show, you know, to to put ones from our place together and not take anything off the table. I agree with what what we just said. We set the budget, we have things we want to spend money on. I want to stick to that. I don't want to change that, resurrect that conversation.
To reframe, oh, and then we'll go to Councilwoman Rissing really quick. I just wanted to say, I think to reframe what Rick is saying. Is that ARPA money does not have some of the same challenges. And so if that was the reason that people didn't want to. Um, go for the micro grants for businesses, that he was asking, would people be willing to shuffle some money? And just so that we had some less incurred, um, funds to possibly accomplish that. I'm sure there would still be challenges with that, um, just maybe not on the same scale possibly. So anyways, go ahead, Councilmember Isaacson.
Now, let me try, so, uh, I was asking about that number, because then you kind of get an idea, is it, is it bang worth the buck? You know, worth it to, we're currently, if we're down to ten thousand dollar ARPA money, we can shuffle back to general fund. But we only have ten thousand dollars to give the micro grants and maybe all of us back off and so what I feel like doing, if it being ten thousand. The ARPA plan was to infuse it into your businesses and increase your, make your economy higher and. And withstand COVID and come out there with that. And so we chose the council to. We couldn't get, couldn't get out the door, couldn't get out the door, couldn't apparently do that, multiple, multiple, so let's give ourselves some more time when we can get. General fund dedicated that and take the time to do it right, so we're not just wasting it.
So I went, oh, good. And I would point out, we still have the economic development. Element of the comp plan that we're working on, that it will actually guide your next by year. Uh, what you should be spending economic development dollars on. So I think we could probably put a vote on this for ten, it sounds like if it's possible, easy to get the number, that'd be great, maybe that would, you know, um. Uh, fix our curiosity. So with that, let's go ahead and move on to our last discussion items before we run out of time. The food truck policy, um, with Director Thomas.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council and members of the community. Uh, we will, can you go ahead and bring up, um, the presentation? The food truck and Troy Davis is going to be giving the presentation, our senior planner. Um, essentially, this is a desktop and repurposing of some work we did several years ago. So we're going to go through that work, but we did update the policy just because we work with the fire department, the building department. And we'll get some other key names as well, so. We're going to get that up really quick. Um, I'll just actually work it, anyway. When you're on mute.
Just noticed. Um, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council, I'm Troy Davis, Senior Planner here at the City of Duval through the. I think a couple in the in the room that I haven't met yet. Um, yes, as Laura mentioned, we've been working on the food uh, truck ordinance. Uh, cut on the back burner off and on for. Number of years since twenty sixteen, so we're excited to get this project picked back up and and hopefully move forward. The next slide, please. So we want to distinguish a little bit between mobile food unit versus non-mobile food unit. Um, most jurisdictions will distinguish between the two. Uh, and we we chose this terminology, mobile food unit as opposed to just straight up food truck. Um. You know, just for. I don't know what to call it, just, uh, um, just to be a little bit more nuanced, I guess. Um, so essentially, what we have here is we distinguished between mobile food units as those. Um, mobile food units that actually prepare uh, food for sale within the unit itself. So, uh, if you're not producing food or product within the unit itself, such as an ice cream truck. Um, a mobile food delivery service, Uber Eats, uh, and those sorts of things. We're not going to consider you a mobile food unit u- under the provisions of this ordinance. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so as I mentioned, we've, we've started this project back in early twenty sixteen. Uh, it's been picked up and put on hold a couple times, uh, just due to staff, um workload and council priorities. Next slide. So, yeah, so some of the reasons behind the food truck ordinances is it really began with interest from the um. Business community uh here in Duval and in the region. We have a growing food truck industry in in the nation, the country. I know down here in Tucson. Uh, in Arizona particularly, there are food trucks everywhere. Food trucks where you wouldn't expect them to be. Uh, so it's definitely a a booming business. Allowing for food trucks helps with our economic development here in the city. Uh, food trucks can, depending on their notoriety, can be destination points in and of themselves. So it helps really activate uh our commercial cores. In terms of bringing people outside, uh particularly in in the fair weather months. We also, um, by allowing, sorry, by adopting a temporary ordinance. This gives us the opportunity to just give it a trial run, uh to see how things work out. Uh, if they don't work out, you know, then, you know, no harm done. Uh, but we have it set up in our code to last for a period of twenty four months. And we will accept applications for the first twelve uh months with the opportunity to renew. Uh, so that's kind of the time limit that we've, we've set on that. Uh, next page. Uh, so some of the things that we looked at in terms of formulating this code. Uh, we did look at best practices from the American Planning Association. Did look at the dra- uh existing ordinances with other jurisdictions across the country. Um, Portland, Austin, San Diego, Greensboro, North Carolina. Uh, some of the local ones include Langley, Des Moines, Zena, McLaughlin, Lacey. Uh, I believe we also did look at Monroe. The other jurisdictions close by. Uh, we did rely a lot on internal expertise. We did have extensive conversations between the planning department, between public works and our local fire department. Uh, we wanted to make sure that uh all regulatory departments were on board and part of drafting this ordinance. Uh, and also in in past meetings, uh, we've also included input that we've received from planning commission and city council. Uh, in the years past. That's the next topic. So the draft ordinance is used, as you've seen, the consists of twenty different topics. Uh, we just everything, of course, from the purpose, uh all the way down to utilities. And and all of these different topics are are regulated and and address uh food trucks and how they'll operate within the city. The next. Uh, so some of the major highlights of this draft ordinance is obviously we're restricting. Mobile food units to our commercial areas of the, of the city. This includes our mixed use uh areas as well. Again, this falls outside of special use permits, so. Uh, we're not allowing uh food trucks operating under this draft ordinance to be within right of ways or uh public parks. Uh, per se, uh, those will operate uh under the special use permit. And we're also not applying this to food trucks that uh operate uh to cater to private events hosted. You know, that are open to the public, essentially, so. What this also does is it helps prohibit mobile food units from becoming semi-permanent fixtures on the landscape. So, uh, you know, you may be familiar with other towns when you drive through. And you know, and if you're just looking closely, you can go, oh, my gosh, I can totally tell a food truck operates there, even though they might not be operating at the moment. Uh, just because of the infrastructure they'll have, you know, usually it can appear something, but we wanted to make sure that we didn't kinda have, didn't have that. As part of our operations, so we do require things to be packed up and put away at the end of the day. Uh, we do place limits on potential nuisances, so these are things like lighting and noise. And 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 close proximity to operation to residential areas. And these were primarily essential because we do allow, we are proposing to allow these in our mixed use zones. If it were just strictly commercial areas where there were no mixed use, it would be quite as big of a deal. But since we're um borderline, close to potential residential areas, we wanted to make sure that those extra nuisance limitations were in effect. We also prevent a li- uh or limit with this draft ordinance, a conglomeration of mobile food units. Uh, so I believe we limit the number of food units on any commercial property to three. This is, of course, is in part because, obviously, when you start to allow multiple food units on the same property. Uh, you un- unleash kind of a new kind of beast in terms of things you need to watch for and regulate. And and we didn't wanna quite go there with this draft ordinance. Uh, we also prohibit the sale of goods outside the mobile food unit. And again, this is to keep things clean and contained, uh so that we don't have this evolving proliferation of a food truck. And things spilling out farther and farther away from the food truck. Um, and as I mentioned, the the ordinance is set to expire uh in two years. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so our status where we're at in the process, as you know, all policy work has to go through a regulatory process. We've pretty much been on the fifth step uh for quite a while. Until recently, we've been able to uh get a final semifinal, I call semifinal draft. Uh, ready for you guys to to review. Uh, following any input or or recommended changes from the planning commission and council, we'll go forward with making, uh, setting the public hearings. Uh, and get those taken care of, uh, before we uh ask the council to take final action. Uh, next slide. So it was just kind of the quick and dirty. I know we're short in time, so I kinda wanted to rush through that, so we have some time for discussion. But anyway, I wanna turn the floor um back over to the, uh, sorry, the mayor pro temp, if I'm correct.
All right, um, what's our answer?
Just one quick question for you. I remember discussing this in planning commission. Uh, but if you can refresh my memory, for the mobile food units, that includes both the mobile trucks itself or the traditional food truck. Would it also include things like a tow behind barbecue unit or a wood fired oven in its tow behind? Where the food is being prepared onsite, but not necessarily in an enclosed vehicle? Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, yeah, essentially, it would, it would cover anything that's producing, that's mobile and capable of producing. Food uh preparation uh for consumption.
Thank you. Would would this include uh? Mobile trucks would include like mobile expresso carts that you see people pushing down the streets or. Mobile hot pot stands, you know, like you see in cities. Would that be considered a food truck? A mobile food process?
Uh, that's a good question. Um, no, I don't think not so much. The intent wasn't really for for push cart type vending to occur. Um, our regulations in the draft ordinance do essentially result in stationary action. Uh, and not mobile. If someone had, I I suppose if somebody had a push cart. Uh, type setup where they were doing the prep on the cart, uh, they could do that, but it would, it would be stationary. Uh, essentially for the, for the duration, they wouldn't be able to be pushing it around town per se.
Uh, councilor Shaker?
Uh, first of all, you could push down sides because that's city property, right? So it's happy, even if it was a push cart, we allow that, it has to be on by the front according to the laws. Let's see, but that wasn't my question. Uh, my question was around the timeframe. For this, because there was a sixty day review, I think, starting roughly June. Is that correct? I saw on this.
Oh, yeah, um, so, yeah, so as part of the process, we did send the, one of the initial prior drafts. To the Washington State Department of Commerce for review, which is required by state statute.
Oh, okay. Could you go back to that slide?
And then Troy, can you address the hours of operation or the motion food trucks as well?
Which slide?
One, one. Four, oh, yeah, very good. This one, uh, one. Oh, sorry, one more.
One more. This one.
Yeah, this is the one with it, so, uh, Congress is today review, so has that been started already?
Yeah, it actually was, we completed it.
Oh, okay, that's great, that's great. I was, I was thinking it might be a sixty dot or sixty day delay from the first of of June. So I guess the question with all this then is, how soon could we actually allow for this?
So we, so we can come back actually at the next meeting and technically approve it because it's an interim or temporary ordinance. We would have to hold a public hearing within the first sixty days after adoption. But we can also prepare and do the hearing as part of the order as well. So it just depends on what council wants to do. If they wanna hold the hearing prior to the adoption of the interim ordinance. Then we wouldn't necessarily be able to do it the next meeting, but we don't need the board to do, we don't need the uh timeline for the public hearing. So we can do it, we can do it either way, because we're not adopting this permanently.
Yeah, good, yeah, I I uh. The, the reason I don't think it's would be beneficial to them sooner as opposed to later, a lot of food trucks are already. You know, they're, they're already figuring out their own schedules, uh, uh, right now. And um, if sooner we could get the word out that Duval would be open to that. Uh, they could work, potentially work that into the schedules and get the necessary permits and all, you know, all of that should, we come through Duval.
Uh, councilor, I.
Yeah, um, so I had a full comment. Uh, one would be generator noise. I don't know if. Even if it was an event, I mean, your generator, even an onboard one, might just be something you tolerate. But if one parked next to my business and I had outdoor seating for my restaurant, I wouldn't wanna hear a food truck. Onboard generator loud running all the time. So I don't know exactly how loud an onboard generator is. I certainly would wanna generator sitting beside it. You know, that would be very loud. Um, I'll just, I'll finish real quick. And then, um, I'm curious why we consider mixed use. I mean, maybe I need to look at a zoning map, but I I think that I would feel more comfortable if it's only allowed in the commercial. Unless there was some really strong reason to allow it in mixed use. Um, and then if there was a maximum for the policy for the entire city. I know there's like reper location, but you wouldn't want like ten sites with three. I mean, that can get out of control. Is there any way we could kind of cap how many of these permits we offer? In the city at any given time?
How many you have to, yeah.
How many you have to? Yeah, at a given time.
Uh, Troy, do you wanna start with the generator one?
Sure. Yeah, so, so right now, the way we have it drafted is, is our um, our ordinance, draft ordinance just refers back to city code. Uh, in terms of a, a noise nuisance. We, we could take a closer look at um the generator in terms of, of of that specific noise. It, it gets a little tricky. To, to regulate the specific noise of a generator. But I mean, we, we can definitely look at whether it's, you know, in in internal versus external. You know, would be much easier to try, I think, regulate, uh, if we're going to actual down to the decimals. Uh, emitted, that, that would start to become a little bit more difficult uh to, to regulate and monitor. But uh, we could take a closer look at that if, if that's the desire of the, the council.
I think the other thing we could do is look at making sure that it's X amount of feet away as well, so that might be another way to look at it.
I wanna say too, you don't have to go on my other questions, but I think we're limited to one per turn.
Yeah, you know, um, I think, you know, I, if staff has a check with Ellen, I, Ellen and I might have some guidelines as well. Uh, and it's very, very difficult to get a food truck permitted um in, on the road in the state of Washington. So, um, that might be a good place to look. They probably already have some noise standards in place, uh, before they permit a food truck. We're down to about four minutes before we should stop, so, um, anyone who hasn't spoken yet, if you have a question, uh, councilor Isaacson.
Kind of push temporary good at that, and we have six days of public hearing, we'll always revisit and revamp our codes. Always when you're mentioning, will you agree to it? Let's look at a, an order, a good enough product to get anything moving. You go to a forest, what a statement, it says, if a local business is affected by the sound. They could be required to move to a location, you know, something like that. Unless, but this is decided too loud for them. They may want to, they're, they're bringing for track too. Let them say, I don't want this noise affecting my business. They call the city and says, hey, for the policy, you have to move somewhere else because of this. He just, he just scratched it, both issues, you know, if you're there wanting to.
Um, I'll go really quick and then council member love it, I don't think you've heard from me yet either. Um, so based on the um requirements for parking amongst other things, probably. I'm assuming like if you look at a map of Duval, right? I mean, there are only certain places that are gonna work. Um, so I was curious, is that something that we would, I don't know, like you guys have so much extra time. But is that something that you would look at to help reduce correspondence? So that you have, I don't imagine you still have to go out and inspect or look at where they're proposing, where they're applying to go. But over time, so maybe more gradually, you would kind of fill in a map and know. That like this would be an allowed area, um, or, and then also be tracking who's there on what days. I mean, I, I don't know, is that something that?
Yeah, I think it's gonna, honestly, it's gonna be a lot of uh trial and error the first year. Um, really, it's, it's not gonna go in a ton of places because you're gonna have, a business is gonna have to have a parking lot. And it can't encumber their existing parking. It has to be in an area where you have surplus. Um, so I think if I count on my hand, maybe five to seven areas within the community that we, you know, we see that. But, uh, I think what we'll do is when we come back, we'll just add some exhibit, a zoning map. If they just put a couple stars or we think it might happen, so that council can see that. We'll add something about, like to try and address noise. I don't honestly know if we need to cap the number yet, because this first year, you know, it, it's the first two years, so it's gonna be trial and error. And maybe once we do a little mouth exercise, we'll know if this is gonna be a problem or not. We also wanted to outreach with the chamber and Rotary as well, once we get through this.
Council member love it, did you have anything to add, or you?
I think it's, I think it's definitely worth a shot. I mean, I think a lot of the jobs we've dealt, but I, I think it's a great, you know, it's a great thing. So sometimes those things become breaking waters in the places they go a lot, so.
Yeah, and I would just add too, really quickly, you mentioned about the timing of the public hearing and. Would we do it the thing night? Or, I mean, I prefer to not rush too much. And I know you were mentioning people are getting their schedules, but I don't think it'd be a terrible thing to have a soft start of it. You know, get inundated with applications, so I don't know. I always prefer to stretch things that would team a little bit more. Um, but of course, if there is some reason that it would be helpful to kind of put it all together and just go on it, you know, it's a temporary thing, so I'd be fine with that as well.
Uh, we're not very one way or another. It's really have to council, so if we give this some guidance. If we prep the hearing, we'll have it the second meeting in April. If we don't have it, we'll, we'll come back for the next meeting.
So you want like head nods from council? Do we want, we for sure want a, a public hearing?
Well, we have to.
We have to have it, but you wouldn't have to be. The same meeting or separate meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, correct. Do we want to have the public hearing and then at the meeting following that have? The discussion and potential vote on the item? Or do you want it all on the same thing?
Do the temporary approval when the hearing happens? Can you do, that's what she said, you go either way.
Yeah, it's a temporary ordinance, so historically, temporary ordinance is all a public hearing. After it's approved, that's the traditional model. Honestly, we've never done one before or during. But it doesn't matter, like just letting you know what you wanna do.
So, it feels almost disingenuous because like I wanna hear, you know. I'm just like checking a box. I don't know, does anyone, so I heard from council on rise, then just really quick, we're down to the last minute or so. Council member, stop hold, do you have a preference?
Well, I, it's kind of like approving the whole in public hearing seemed backwards to me, but it's allow when I, I guess it's fair.
But would you prefer to do it?
Well, I haven't seen an order with a temporary ordinance yet, so.
Okay, councilor, I'm Richard, you have a preference?
Uh, I think really because of the comments that Rick made earlier in terms of scheduling and summer events. And coming off the conversation around economic development, this is actually a dear fact, economic development, I refer to.
Okay, and that was your opinion, right?
You know, I. I would probably rather have a public hearing before we make a final decision, just, if, if this has been a hot topic of differences, and it would, I would just feel.
Just if if this has been a hot topic of businesses, I would just feel um because I know they've had feedback about this topic. I would feel a little bit uncomfortable, but.
And then councilmember Love, that you already gave your preference.
Yeah, I mean, yes, I think we can just go for it, but isn't there a way to do the same meeting, you said?
We can't hold the public hearing at the next meeting because we we can't meet the hearing, actual public hearing deadline. So I'm going to hold the hearing and approve it. It'll be the second meeting in April.
Right, that's.
Is there, is there a, I guess, a advantage to doing that, to getting it done, just that one extra meeting sooner? Instead of just waiting until we could have it?
We not honestly held a public hearing before we adopted a temporary ordinance. Like this would be something different. Like normally a temporary ordinance is a trial and you hold the hearing within sixty days of approval. But it seems a little split in the room.
I mean, it seems like a majority are fine with just doing it. So I I can live with that if it's not a majority.
Well, so what if we go to the whole here and have to approve it? It's just may now, everyone says, I hate you, we don't do it. We all pull it back, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if we have a whole hearing in our system, you're more likely, but you're concerned, right? And they, I don't want this, I don't want this, we'll pull that. I think we prove before we get things moving to a staff.
We are out of time.
Yeah, uh, I think we'll have to, you get at least, you think you have what you need.
So what was the decision?
Sounds like we'll just do it like temporary ordinances usually are, which would be, we'll get it done and then the public hearing will follow up.
And we can actually have the public hearing right after. So we're with literally, well, not the same meeting, but the one right after. And so it's gonna be within two day, two weeks instead of sixty days later.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll make sure that we um communicate with the with the Rotary Chamber.
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay, all right. With that, we'll go into the journey at seven oh one. We ran over. Thank you, Troy.
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to call the Tuesday, March twenty first, Duval City Council, we need an order at seven oh eight P M. And would you please join me for the placement? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America and its nation under God, in this soul, the liberty and justice for all. Do you, please, please leave your role?
Yes. Mayor Alkelander.
Here.
Mayor Protam McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Isaacson.
Here.
Councilmember Schaper.
Here.
Councilmember Mercer. Your councilman, councilmember Suffle. Your councilmember Maplin.
Here.
And councilmember Love.
Here.
We have a forum, and it's nice to see everyone's faces in person tonight. You know, we've had lots of illnesses and scattered about. So great to have everyone in the same room. Um, do we have any additions or corrections to this evening's agenda? Seeing then, we have motion to approve this council agenda. So it's been moved in second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say hi.
I love it.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, uh, we'll move on to presentations. We have one presentation this evening, and it's the preliminary uh Q four twenty twenty two financial report we directed recently. Good evening, members of the audience, and the amazing character. And um I'm just gonna go over the the preliminary quarter for finance report, which is also in your packets. So I'll go kind of slow, well, I'll go kind of fast, but please, if you have any questions. So first slide. Yeah, so this is just a by year to date revenue by fund and by category. And ninety seven point five percent of the by year uh revenue that was budgeted was reduced. So we did really go through the projection. And by categories that were a little bit lower than anticipated were special revenues funds, which includes revenues for school impact fees generated by permits. Um, estimates were a little too high. And then also have a corresponding expenditure. Capital project funds were also a little lower, mainly due to revenues and expenses for the other. Right, next slide. Uh, the city ended the by year with eighty six point six percent of budgeting expenditures spent. The capital project fund category had biggest budget to actual variance, mainly due to project expenditures occurring or being paid in twenty twenty three rather than in twenty twenty two. So we'll see some maybe a budget adjustment there. Next slide. There's something missing from the top there, made really cool graphic. And maybe. When we're trying to. So um general fund, re- revenue fund is added as expected for the by year. And it's critically using taxes one hundred percent, sales tax one hundred percent, utility tax one hundred percent, and sales tax from construction was all one hundred percent received. Um, in twenty twenty two, the city received five point two percent or approximately three hundred thousand more general front revenues that it did in twenty twenty one. And that's even though grant revenue from uh COVID related groups was a hundred fifty thousand dollars less. Revenue generated from taxes was almost three hundred fifty thousand dollars more in twenty twenty two than twenty twenty one. And revenue from charges for services was uh eighty six thousand more mainly from tree mitigation fees. Are there any questions so far? I know this is asking, okay, general, uh, next slide, please. General fund expenditures were lower than expected for by year, partially due to unfull positions, but were also lower uh due to professional services um that were a little bit lower than anticipated. At twenty twenty two, general fund expenditures were six percent or approximately three hundred thirty five thousand dollars more than twenty twenty one. Next slide, onto building and permitting revenues. Building and pretty permitting revenue for Biden was a little lower than anticipated primarily due to school impact fees. And those are fees that are remitted to the school districts. So we'll see a corresponding uh decrease in expenditure or not decrease, but it will be lower than budgeted. Um, compared to twenty twenty one, twenty twenty, two revenues were over a million dollars or ninety six point three higher, percent higher in twenty twenty one. And you can see in the top corner there, permits, um, these are same on action permits in twenty twenty two were eighty one compared to fifty two. And I believe forty eight of those eighty one permits came in in the last quarter, mostly in December, I think. So building permitting was really, really busy. Right, next slide, please. Uh, building permitting uh rep expenditures were lower than expected primarily due to school impact fees remitted to the school district. And compared to twenty twenty one, expenditures were thirty six percent or four hundred and twenty thousand higher. Again, that's in part due to the the impact fees that are remitted to the district. Next slide, please. Um, here's our utilities, and I'll just go through this real quickly. Uh, so water, sewer and storm drain revenues were as expected for the by the union. And a lot of this is we were at the end of the by any budget adjustment, then we, you know, have a better idea of what revenues are gonna be. Um, water expenditures were lower than budgeted due to less uh spend on professional services and supplies. Uh, sewers were right, sewer expenditures were right as expected. And then storm expenditures were lower than budgeted due to an unfull position and then less spent on professional services than anticipated. Questions, next slide, please. And then on to real estate taxes. This is kind of uh exciting. Uh, so real ta- uh, real estate tax in twenty twenty two was nine hundred eighty seven thousand, and that was from two hundred twenty eight units sold in twenty twenty two. Uh, it wasn't as much as the one, just over one point one million in twenty twenty one. But as you can see, the average sales price per unit went up from six hundred thirty four thousand to eight hundred forty thousand. So pretty interesting, I. Yes, the question.
I thought I saw something on the news today about real estate prices on the east side going down ten to twenty percent. Um, what kind of impact would that have on our self-ta- uh, real estate?
Our real estate tax? Well, I mean, if 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 prices do come down, we'll get less real estate tax per unit. But I think right now we have a lot of units in development, so our our estimates are, I I'm comfortable with estimates that we have for twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four.
Yeah, do we um ever gonna write down revenue related to new home builds versus uh existing?
So we get a list of all of the sales, so we could go through and pick out which ones were new. And it's Excel spreadsheet, so if that was something council wanted me to do, I could just block them all together. That's a lot. It's in in June. Yeah, I mean, if we.
They don't have like a flag of, you know, new cash versus not, I think other cities would be curious, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next slide, please. Uh, this is the impact return. So the city did, in twenty twenty two, we only uh received revenue from three impact uh fees for park and street. A lot of that is due to development or developer credits. And that's compared to two in twenty twenty one. Um, the reason why park impact has larger amounts in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two is because the city uh received money from a developer. We put it into an escrow account, and then it, um, the developer made a lot of improvements to the park. And as soon as that park is completed and accepted by the city, we will um return the money to them. And that will be an expense for us. And then we'll have the park as an asset, which is really nice. All right, next slide. Uh, this is our transportation benefit district. Uh, it's a point two of a percent sales tax. And that the city just started receiving in twenty twenty. And you can see towards the end of twenty twenty two, sales tax revenues or revenue, this revenue started going down a little bit. And that's because our sales tax for construction has decreased a little bit over the prior year each month. Um, hopefully we'll see that go back up with the development that's going on right now. And uh, city received four point five percent or seventeen thousand nine hundred more in transportation benefit district sales tax in twenty twenty two than it did in twenty twenty one. Next slide, please. And this is just the twenty twenty two sales tax. And this includes the sales tax for construction, but not the transportation benefit um sales tax. And the general fund received one point four million of the seventeen five that was received. And the strategic fund received three hundred and thirty four thousand, and that's going to council projects. Uh, and without sales tax for construction, they, so uh the city overall received four point six percent or seventy six thousand, almost seventy seven thousand more in sales tax in twenty twenty two than it did in twenty twenty one. Without sales tax for construction, the increase was seven point two percent or eighty two thousand. Without sales tax for construction, the increase was seven point two percent, or eighty-two thousand. Next slide. And then this is, this, the final slide is a little hard to see, but, um, our beginning fund balance was just over, at the beginning of the by year, it was just over twenty-six million dollars. Uh, when we did our budget, the by year budget adjustments, we anticipated that the ending fund balance would be thirty-three million and three hundred dollars. And the actual was thirty-seven thousand six hundred, or thirty-seven million, sorry, thirty-seven point six million, there we go. Uh, so the variance is just about four point three. So we ended up with four point three million in ending fund balance than we anticipated. And a lot of that is because projects in twenty twenty-two didn't get completed in twenty twenty-two. So those expenditures will be part of the mid by year budget adjustment in, in twenty twenty-three. Yes.
So a lot of conversation around budget, a lot of times like, you know, are we going to have funds? And we consistently get kind of comforted by you, like, yeah, it says this, but this is what history is. This, this is what it looks like, but the reality is what's gonna happen. So that four million, four point three billion variance, how does that compare historically in your experience?
You know, well, historically, we do end up with more ending fund balance than we anticipated. So this, this is, this is a completely normal thing. The city budgeted revenues pretty conservatively and expenditures conservative as well. So we, we kind of try to estimate a little bit lower revenues and a little bit higher expenditures because we can't by law go over our budgeted expenditures. So this is a pretty, a pretty normal ending fund balance. Any other questions? And this is just preliminary, we still have a few adjustments to make, um, just true enough overhead allocations and allocations to internal service funds. But this won't change materially at all. It'll just be, you know, a few thousand dollars here and there.
Not, not a question, there, just, just thanks. I, I really liked the summary you put together. It's easy, easy for us non-biological types like me to understand and see it as the quick, uh, in quick glance. So thank you very much.
Any other questions for Director Mason?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to comments from the audience, uh, we start with, uh, those online. Uh, do we have anyone online that wishes to provide a couple of comments this evening? Do we have anyone visiting online?
Um, no, we only have Kenny.
Okay, great. Uh, then in that case, if there's anyone in the audience who might have a comment this evening, you can come and fill in and provide your name and address, and I'll have three minutes to speak. But we're not saying we, so we'll go ahead and close comments for the audience and move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So we should.
Seven.
Oh, we can get it.
It's been moved to second. And all those in favor of approving this evening's consent agenda, please say hi. And all those opposed, please say no. Motion passers. Uh, and with that, we want to schedule items. Uh, Mayor's report is up first, but, uh, we do have our new planning commissioner in the office this evening. So there's Elizabeth Farheart. Uh, I'd like you to come up to the podium and introduce yourself to council. Uh, that was on consent agenda. Uh, I will say that his partner and her husband are relatively new to the valley. Uh, they both have extensive public service backgrounds. Uh, and I know that you're gonna make a wonderful addition and bring a great perspective to the planning commission, and we'll please have you, so welcome.
Thank you so much, and I can't tell you how pleased I can be here. So first, let me thank you, Mayor, and the City Council, the Planning Department, and, and my fellow planning commissioners for allowing me the opportunity to serve here. You know, we just arrived in Duval this past year, my husband took a job down the road here. Um, I've just separated from the United Nations, he's separated from the US government. And we wanted to build some roots in the Pacific Northwest, and we chose Duval as the place we wanted to do it. So it's exciting for me to immediately be able to see how I might start fitting in and serving in this beautiful, beautiful community. So, thank you.
Well, thank you.
My report, uh, first of all, uh, for folks that haven't seen the stage revenue forecast came out yesterday. I haven't had time to dive into the week, but, um, the revenue forecast is still higher than expected, but lower than the previous, uh, estimates as of, um, the end of the year. Um, so the legislature is working on, um, updating and finalizing their capital and operating and transportation budgets based on that new information. Uh, we expect those budgets in about early next week, uh, which should give us some information as well about some of our capital budget or transportation budget requests in the Senate. Um, House Bill fifteen seventy-eight, the emergency wildfire preparedness bill, that's gonna put a lot more, um, a lot more weight and requirements on local governments to prepare for wildfire planning, uh, especially our community being the top target for that, um, is moving forward. And kind of hearing in the Senate yesterday, um, I would expect that to be exact out of committee relatively soon and move to the floor in relatively rapid fashion. Um, reason being, the size of being a critical public safety issue, it has broad bipartisan support. Um, and so, um, I expect that to go through probably in the next week to two weeks, if not sooner.
And those funding, uh, with that as well?
Uh, I believe there is some fundings that are state-directed, but it also requires local government planning. This is really that stick that's needed to get local governments to start doing the evacuation plans and things that haven't been.
Yeah.
Um, we don't want to be California and have people trapped. Um, and so this is a real, this is a multi-year effort by the lands commissioner and Representative Springer and Representative Chet from East Washington.
Yeah. Great opportunity to maybe, but I think that if we get help from Calons and the state, we wouldn't get trapped very bad.
Absolutely, and I think part of that planning, uh, that planning process is going to highlight some of, uh, the, the challenges. There's also a risk because, um, as you aggregate more of that data, your home insurance costs go up. Uh, I know in our vacation area, we're not able, most people in our neighborhood can't even get insurance anymore, so there's only one insurance type. So, uh, we are not nearly as severe, but as time goes on and more West Side wildfires happen, that is also gonna be a risk for us. So that makes that planning component and the staffing and planning of it even more important. So thank you for reading that. Um, affordable housing bills, the one that we are most concerned about, uh, House Bill eleven-ten excludes us, which is good, uh, up to twenty-five thousand. But it's still, uh, will create ripple effects into our area as the cities to the north of us in particular will be expanding rapidly. Um, so we will have some defense to play on that after the legislative session and moving forward for the next few years. Um, yesterday, I had the, uh, pleasure of testing by on behalf of the Association of Washington Cities on the Blightville, which is fifty-three sixty-three, um, and that's in regards to dark possession, um, in the Supreme Court decision. There's still a lot of angst in, in trying to make sure that it gets done right and getting it out, um, this session. Uh, it did not get out of the House, and so Senator Dinger, uh, did go some procedural, um, steps to get it out at the Senate after cut, which was actually a pretty big, big deal to get done. Um, so there are, uh, was a lot of great testimony, a lot of mayors, um, yesterday, um, in keeping our fingers crossed that that will pass. Uh, also had the opportunity to attend the Horebit District Town Hall this weekend. Uh, the topics were gun control, uh, police pursuits, and special education. Uh, they were the top comments. Unfortunately, um, there were some, uh, not exactly, um, there was, Senator Dinger was subjected to some relatively misogynistic and racist, uh, comments from people in the audience, um, uh, regarding the public safety bills, which is a really disappointing outcome. And it's a reminder that we need to hold, um, our audiences and ourselves accountable, um, in those public meetings uh, to make sure that our elected officials in our community feel safe wherever we're at. Uh, we have the Sound Cities Association's strong mayor's meeting today, uh, relatively brief, um, just talking mainly about what's going on in our communities. Uh, a lot of us are briefly looking at some legislative session, moving that forward, um, and as well as getting ready for our comprehensive plans. Um, Subqami Valley Governments Association Dinner is tomorrow night, um, is anyone else going to that? We've got three of us going, um, it's in Subqami at the, the golf course, um, so that should be a great event. And then, um, for next, then say, Sound Cities Association Networking Dinner is in Renton, and King County Executive Council team will be giving the keynote. Uh, it's by understanding that it'll be, um, a city-focused version of the state or the county. Uh, so lots of good information to come out and lots of excellent networking opportunities there. And then finally, um, City Administrator McNabb, Mayor Cortem, and I will be heading out to Washington DC this weekend for the National Media Cities. Uh, we'll be meeting with our Congressional Delegation and attending lots of great sessions. We don't have the heavy hitters in the administration like we had last year. Last year was a whole core press, but it should be a lot of great information. And then, um, for my Association of Washington City Royals, we'll be meeting with, uh, the executive board will be meeting with all members of Congressional Delegation of Washington State, and that's why I have this meeting. Any questions? Um, seeing that, you'll go ahead and move on to the city commissioners' report.
Well, good evening, Council, Mayor, um, Sidney, and Mr. Peter. Um, so a pretty short report today, but there are a couple of items I wanted to bring to the attention of council. Um, so the first is, um, of importance is next week, uh, next, or next month, next slide, please. Uh, one more. Thank you. Would you like your April council workshop to be on the eleventh or the twenty-fifth? Or there's a third option, passing on April altogether. So recall from our retreat, we disbanded committing meetings and, um, we'll be bringing what was normally updates from staff to the committees to a council workshop. Um, so the plan from the retreat was to have it on the second Tuesday, that council workshop. But the second Tuesday in April is spring break, um, for the school district. And so we could move that meeting, um, to the twenty-fifth if there is not form or interested, interest in holding it on the eleventh. So wanted to hopefully get an answer to that tonight, so we can do planning around that.
I should just go around?
If you could, yeah.
Um, I can't attend the eleventh, that most I might be able to call in, um, but I couldn't share the cow. Um, that being said, the twenty-fifth works for me, but I don't care if everyone decides to still have it on the eleventh, I think that's it.
I'm good with the plan.
The twenty-fifth would be easier.
The eleventh is fine, and the twenty-fifth is dicey.
Either, either. Well, for there's, uh, both sides, I mean, if I die on the eleventh, easier than I did.
And I'm not available on the eleventh, I have a work deadline on the twenty-fifth, I potentially can reschedule with Dylan because he's not available.
So for the eleventh, I'm seeing one, two. A dollar and a dollar and a half.
Also, don't you attending?
Yeah, attending.
I could attend even once.
So I guess I would defer to council on if you with three initiatives and one possibly dialing in, you would like to have that workshop on the eleventh. It's in replacement of committee meetings. So things, the, the, the plan right now for the eleventh would be, um, reports from staff, which we could put to a council meeting, we could do a cow, um, we can build into a city administrator update, so, uh, Mayor Cortem and I hadn't planned on any extremely pressing events for the eleventh.
Then you just.
We, we, we do have the housing needs assessment action plan that we wanted to talk about in April. It doesn't need to be the eleventh, and I, I would prefer we have more of a full council, because it's a large volume of work.
Does it have to be Tuesday? I mean, I know we tend to do it in our two council names, uh, first and third, it's in between those. Does it happen on Tuesday, does it work better for the general audience to be the other day?
Um, the concern would be if we pick other days, just making sure it doesn't conflict with planning commission meetings, which tend to be what those say.
Yeah, I'd be fine just, I mean, if you think we have enough time on the, what is it, the eighteenth? So we have two meetings of April fourth and the eighteenth, and I don't recall a ton on, I mean, would it be okay to push housing needs to the eighteenth? Or?
Yeah, I'll be flying home that day, so it would be Naomi doing it, but she is fully capable. But I'm really open to whatever.
Okay, having heard that, I think we will have a regular council in April, the fourth and the eighteenth. Okay, thank you.
There's kind of just.
We are trying to get, good evening, council, we're trying to get ARP back then, eh? But Tom has a scheduled topic already, he's going to another council after our, so that was gonna happen. A, it's our five, which might be planned if you aren't in a scale topic anyway. Which, yeah. Forty. So we can, I'm going, and they need to listen to the same.
Okay. All right, thank you, um, moving on. Um, so, new development update, um, our Director Thomas attended the Subqami Valley Outdoor Recreation Meeting this morning, um, where there was a discussion of the King County Blood Management Plan. They are conducting a survey, QR code is there. We'll make sure that the city administrator update is put into share points, you all can all get it. But it's also likely on the King County website. So please do go to review that survey and provide your input if you are so inclined. Next slide. Um, as Director Thomas, uh, came to present, we have this survey out and we have, uh, information here. I'm very pleased that we have this survey in Spanish this year as well. Um, so, uh, lots of good work going into getting this out to the community. Next slide. And we have two new planners, um, so you met Naomi, and we also had Joe start, was that last week already? Okay, so, uh, Joe started last week as well, and, um, focused on different things. Naomi's doing long-range planning and, uh, Joe is, uh, taking the senior planner position. Um, and then up at the top, we have a lot of pre-application meetings, they're in demand, and it's keeping the department pretty busy. Right now, we have, um, I can't see that far, there was a couple religious institutions, um, a commercial plan project, and one residential. So, next slide. I, I know, in fact, my glasses are in the car, so I'm not going to read this slide. Um, but from the bottom, the way my eyes work, I can see the bottom a little closer. Um, the police department work is progressing well, and we did get the King County Parks Levy Grant application out for bank stabilization from a Corning Park. And I want to thank our community partners who put in letters of support to us. Um, CAFs who worked on summer stage, uh, gave us a letter of support, asked the Chamber of Commerce, and we might have gotten one other letter of support, um, in helping us apply for that. Um, so there's, uh, no care about the emergency management coordinator. Uh, Director Lashewski is helping choose the final candidates for interview for all three positions. The community coordinator, the communications coordinator, and emergency manager. Those first round interviews are happening next week. Um, I have three different teams, uh, doing the three different positions, all interviewing next week for the first round. And then, uh, there's some other information up on top, I'll give you a moment to read it if I can. Okay, next slide. And then the two things that I wanted to raise, um, for tonight, um, and Chief DeBach is here to help facilitate the conversation on it first. So Chief DeBach, um, had a meeting with Ruvie, Ruvie School District, um, last week. Uh, they're proposing two fairly substantial changes to the relationship between the city and the school district, one of which is the elimination of the dare program. So we just wanted to update council that that is under consideration. The other is eliminating the officer at. The other is eliminating the officer at Shared Valley Elementary. And so Chief and the school district will be working together on what a transition plan might look like, whether it was King Harry. Those two items through the Biden M. We don't know that you answered to that yet. Of importance certainly to our employees is dare is a, Chief, dare has a premium associated with it for the officer. And if we lose that point five for the elementary school, we have obviously a staffing concern. Councilmember Isaacson?
You said we, were they, who's we or they is proposing the cancellation of the dare program and what we got?
This school district.
This school district. They, sorry, Chief DeBach, they had a recent curriculum at the elementary area involving dare type topics added to their curriculum there. The statement's made to me was they're getting the same information from three different sources, which you give around the programs of running along the dares. So they're getting basically the same information three times and their requirements from the state for hours that didn't have any certain classes, they're cutting into that. Question to eliminate that program and still allow our officers in to teach certain portions of this other curriculum as far as like should they drum it up? And making proper choices and that type of thing as far as being a citizen. So they're, they're going to allow officers that had the training, but the dare program is just cutting into the actual curriculum from the school district that is required by the state. So they're, that's why they're asking to.
Councilmember Martha?
Appreciate just sort of a follow up question. I think in terms of the research officers that are running the area funding. Do or that's a little different than the dare piece and we, it's not appropriate in a topic we've been revisited as I mentioned. I was just curious what the, the underpinning that, that should.
They, their experience, while they had over 300 students disenrolled in the district and they're experiencing some bite to show all of theirs. So they're looking at areas that they can cut back and try to save the money and that was one of the areas that has been considered. We just already talked last week, so we're going to be having, you know, opposite follow meetings and ask for the, the ILA agreement. For next school year for that point five position at the Shared Valley.
Yeah, it's worth noting that point five decision is not part of the police level that the high school school. And then the last thing I wanted to bring to Council is we've gotten some information and some concern about short term rentals slash Airbnbs. So we have no authorized short term rentals or Airbnb in Duval from the city's perspective. Nobody can apply our business permit or license to run a short term rental. We will be sending letters of non-conformance to those who we believe are renting a short term rental out of their home. The question I have for Council tonight is, is there an interest in surveying the community to find out if there's an appetite for them? So once you start seeing things that are non-conforming or operating in the city without permission. It begs the question of, do we want to try to bring folks into conformance or make a decision about not having them at all? And so the first process, kind of very similar to the Vutra, would be to survey our community. To see if there's an interest in short term rentals. Not that we necessarily have to immediately act on the survey results, but I think at this point, at least from the internal city staff perspective. We actually don't know what the community's appetite is for those. So wanted to bring it to Council tonight because I think Director Thomas, we suspect five to six, seven. Operating without permission in the city right now. Councilmember Shaker?
Well, see, I got a couple of comments and question. First of all, you know, I personally do not have an appetite for SDRs in, in Duval. I think it actually costs more harm than, than good. And it has a way of, once we open the plug-ins, we'll get people that specifically invest in houses for that, for that purpose. And having non-owner occupied houses within our city, I think will have negative effects on, on Duval. All the reasons that we know and what today. I'm not saying we can't do a survey, although currently it's my understanding that most homes are actually, actually today are actually occupied by the owners. And as such, I would expect that they would feel, you know, similar to what, what I, you know, I just said. The other, the question I have for those people who are currently, are currently running SDRs without a business license, I mean, they're breaking law. What is our legal recourse for, for them? I mean, they, they not only, you know, they not only avoided taxes, but they, but, you know, they obviously operate a business illegally within the city limits.
Well, we're gonna, yeah, I'll, I'll respond at a high level and then turn it over to Director Thomas. So we're gonna start with a polite letter of, please don't do that. And then I'll turn, I'll turn it over to.
So we start off in the soft world of letter of non-conformance and then we try to make contact with them for 48 weeks. And if we don't resolve that, then we issue a notice of violation. And then we put a nice little big A board out in front of that non-conforming use that says there's a violation that can't be removed. And usually that spurs an immediate call from the neighborhood, from the owner. And then they would have to shut it down. I can tell you that a lot of Airbnbs are actually vacant homes. And are only, you know, are only rented out for like graduations and weddings and those types of things. You know, we don't have any, you know, hotels here. So I think that's why we're starting to see them spread out.
Councilmember Supple, Isaacson, and then.
A short term rental is defined for?
It, it Airbnb, VRBO, it can be used for up to 30 days as a short term rental.
So if it exceeds 30 days, what if the, the renter signs a year long lease?
Then that's, that's normal. That's happened to be an Airbnb or an Airbnb.
That would be like leasing a house for a year as opposed to the Airbnb. Because I personally, where a family whose house was burnt down in there, in, in a long-term year long rental.
There's nothing.
And there's nothing yet that prohibits a rental beyond 30 days.
Okay, so if it exceeds 30 days, then they're okay. It's less than.
I mean, assuming there's proper, you know, documentation.
Well, I'm really confused between what constitutes a short term rental versus someone who signs a year long lease to rent a house.
So VRBO and Airbnb are typical vacation type homes and they can be rented for a day. You know, usually up to a month. It requires a business license. Where if, you know, you're just a regular homeowner and you lease your house out or rent it out, you know, monthly or yearly. That is different than a short term rental. So there are actually definitions of what short term rental is, but essentially it's anything that's less than 30 days.
Councilmember Isaacson?
Yeah, I'd support the idea of the new survey. I personally don't like that either one here. Unfortunately, we've developed this city and we're all projections with all in a way in the shrining area where that's the kind of people we're getting here. And also you throw back inflation, cost of living here, suburbanity, they'll be making money. They would just live. They're looking to rent out a whole, a portion of their home or their room or something like that just to be able to make income. So what does, I don't want it 100% return first of all, so I don't like the level of development we have here. But I'm gonna survey this, how we are, our citizens, this survey is over.
Councilmember Martha?
Yeah, so I, I think that, you know, I'm just thinking about, we're not even a quarter of the way through the current budget. So just thinking of our already existing workload that we planned, you know, through the end of that. And I mean, I, I would never say no to a survey. I just don't think there's a huge rush. So at some point, maybe if there's a more general survey in another year or so, you know, or when we're getting to a point where we've worked through a lot of the workload that we've already planned in this budget. Then I absolutely would like to know what the community thinks. I think I know what I, I believe the majority of people might not be super thrilled or would want to be really cautious with anything around that. But I, you never know. I've been surprised before. So, yeah, I think at some point a survey would be helpful, not specifically on this topic. But just maybe on a few topics if that's the waters, but I don't see a huge rush to start with this now.
Councilmember Dethan?
Yeah, I am not in favor of short term rentals and I, I do consider, and I think legally there would be a difference of renting out a room. Long term, you know, having someone live in your house, I think what, and also at bed and breakfast. I think what distinguishes, distinguishes this type of situation from one of those others is that the owner would be in the home in a bed and breakfast type situation. So you would have a stable person supervising the home. And the same if you rented out a room or a, you know, above your garage, you know, to someone, that there'd be more stability. And so I, I think in that respect, I, I would feel comfortable with that. But this is more of random people coming and going in a house that might be right next door to you all the time. Having parties, vacationing. I, if we do ask this question, which I agree with Health Number Montgomery, I don't feel a rush to do it. But if we do, I think we need to make sure it's not asked like, oh, do you think it would be convenient if there was VRBOs in the city? And people would be like, yeah, maybe, you know, if my relatives came to town, that'd be nice. Maybe you ask, how would you like it if the house next door to you had people coming and going on Monday rentals regularly all year round? You know what I mean? The question could elicit, depending on how you ask the question. You know, you might get a different answer.
Councilmember Isaacson, and then I have some information to share that.
I mean, I, we're slightly disagree. You worded the question for what you want, not to move, which will answer the. I mean, you don't know, you don't put a survey out, say, you really want this next year? You say you want VRBOs in your city. And you actually yes or no. I mean, I, I think when you try to paint a picture, especially when the government's good, this is bad. You're influencing the survey results and the city have a lot of trouble. Although I agree, I don't like it next to me. I can't say I want one with the city, but it's not next to me.
Right.
It's either yes or no.
Yeah, so I think one of the things I want to add here is that all across the country, this is a discussion that happens for really in vacation areas. And what is happening is there are multiple things happening. A, cities can determine areas with which VRBOs are allowed. B, you can determine how many are allowed based on the number of housing units in your neighborhood. For flying, having a son, and they have to be permitted. You also can limit how many nights per year of VRBO or an Airbnb can be rented. So for example, we hear a lot about baseball tournaments and what have you coming to town. For example, just a personal experience over the last couple of weekends, my son's tournament ended up in Chahalas. There was nothing to rent within an hour of Chahalas. Once we found out where the location was, so we ended up driving to Lacey to stay the night after a 14 hour day. If we are expecting to have baseball tournaments here and we really want people to stay here, I think that's something we need to think about. If you're going to, because one, just because you open the door for a rental and make it legal, doesn't mean it has to be easy. And doesn't mean it has to disrupt the neighborhoods. So I would encourage folks to look at the National Cities and other, other jurisdictions that have been successful with putting policies in place that meet their communities' needs. While allowing for some a level of economic development and that situation where you have a family member coming into town for the holidays and what have you. There are plenty of ways to actually develop code that may satisfy some non-entrance, if you don't have parties. And in fact, VRBO and Airbnb actually provide noise feeders on their units and they get alarms. To handle the situations where the noise comes up. So that is something that I believe is cities in Utah and Colorado have been implementing. So it's not nearly as nefarious as it's often made to sound. It, it is done deliberately and well. And I think to Councilmember Isaacson's point, I would also request that people think about, especially some of the seniors that may have an A view or may have a garage unit. Where they may not want a long term rental, but they may need somebody, you know, want to rent out for a couple of weeks a year or what have you. And that could be the difference between them being able to make their taxes in the year and then having to sell their home and move out of the city if you bought. So I'd ask that instead of a gut reaction, no, to really analyze what options are out there, the impacts created and what you can do to mitigate that. Because we do not have any house, any overnight housing nearby. We don't have the ability to host people when we have a festival. So we want to have more than a one day festival. It makes it pretty difficult to get people into town, out of town, and back to town. So I think we need, you know, it's perfectly okay not to do anything now, but I would encourage folks to have an open mind and looking at. What really can work and not work rather than just saying no. To Councilmember Isaacson's point as well, a survey is great, but I think it really needs to be pointed with some baselines of understanding in the future, of course. But understanding and putting scenarios out that have already been put in place policy wise other places. Where we already have data to provide the community rather than just trying to get a gut reaction. As policymakers, we have a responsibility to analyze this stuff. And I think that just throwing our hands up and saying we don't want, want those people coming to town. Is not the best way to attract business and other things for the long term. So I just ask folks to think about that. Councilmember Martha?
Yeah, and just along the lines, I, I think it's also important, you know, as we start this discussion beyond. The analysis of, obviously we've got different housing stock in town. We've got areas where they have abundant parking. We have areas that are. One and a half, you know, with streets with limited parking. If you were, you know, over the top related where there's two spots and then suddenly someone is having five people in the house, that's a different scenario. So I, I think it is definitely not an apples to apples in terms of whether it's certain areas of town or, or the composition of certain neighborhoods and areas. I think the other thing is just when we start talking about definitions, I think you highlighted this, you know, the difference between a DB, VRBO, which by definition is always vacant. And if you have a whole house versus an Airbnb where it's a portion of the house. So there's lots of different competitions. I think ultimately that's, I think it's outcome driven in a little bit in terms of. What we decide as a council and the community wants in terms of outcomes and then how to essentially fit that, fill that need. It may be a mixture of it, maybe an outright prohibition, it may be a restriction in terms of where they can be or the types or even limitations on number of occupants. I think the thing that concerns me a little bit more is homes that sit at abandonment or specifically are purchased just for that purpose. Because I think that's where you potentially, you know, get your, it's not taking care of your party. But, but again, that's a broader conversation, let's sort of just create up or down.
Excellent points. And I would just also add as well that just because it's a VRBO or an Airbnb does not mean it's not owner occupied. I personally know plenty of people that rent homes out, that it may be they're renting out while they're snowboarding. Or they're renting out when they're not vacationing in the summer. So there's, you can, you know, there's another point that you can put in the ordinance and you can, you can actually say. That the unit needs to be owner occupied for a certain period of time of the year to mitigate those potential issues and, and downfalls as well. So there's, there's lots of ways to mold and think about it and your points are, were very good. So I think for that. But we know we're not doing anything right now. So.
And thank you for the conversation and the, the ability to offer to counsel that you might start seeing some activity in, around this area. So just be aware, if you start hearing things that some letters are going to block folks that might not really want to receive them. That, I think that's the last slide. And so any other questions for me? I can answer them.
I just had a question going back to the dare and the police officer. Is that something that has been, at this point, has this, has the student body or the parents been made aware of these things yet? Or is it so preliminary that they don't know yet?
I, I believe it's preliminary at this point. I don't think that they know. It was, it was made by the principal in that area of the, the, the kind of the school. It was brought in last week, so I'm very. It was brought in last week, it was already, very.
I would imagine if they're birching the subject with us, that it's not far from being communicated to.
Yeah, it feels like something that the parents should know about soon. And have an opportunity to speak about.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Councilmember Nethan?
Yeah, I just was trying to remember the dollar amount for the Cherry Valley.
It's forty thousand.
Forty thousand each year. So that would be a general fund revenue reduction of forty thousand, with no cut of our expenses.
The dare percentage would be, you know, only kind of ours.
Do we, do we get revenue from the dare? Do they?
We pay, we pay a few percent for the teaching of the dare.
So we would have lower expenses in not having to pay the dare.
And that would, that's.
Yeah, and actually, no, we have to negotiate that with the community, not take away premium from a unionized employee. So if this comes to pass, we'll have to enter a negotiation.
Thank you, City Administrator right now. We don't have council any reports, thanks, since we don't have council committee. So move on to other council reports, did anyone have any in general?
Yeah, tomorrow at ten AM at R J Cabin Coffee, we have a council chat. We'll be, I'll be there from ten to eleven, if any other council members want to go, and for members that need to know. That's it.
Thank you. Moving on to, I'm sorry, Councilmember Nethan?
Yeah, I just wanted to report that I went to the Snohomie Valley Alpha Recreation Action Team this morning and it was very fun to have your comments there remotely. And the topic was the flood control plan and I provided just some feedback about Moncharney Park and the bank's stabilization and then when the floods come through, we're losing our park. And just that a lot of the focus has been on natural approaches to how rivers operate. And when you start losing your park, that, that, you know, really impacts our cities significantly. And so they took that feedback and then, or Director Thomas also mentioned about one twenty fourth and how it impacts our community to, well, even more than one twenty fourth, when Duval sometimes goes under and even Jack, Highway two oh three, sometimes we're completely out of it. So having it out to the public and getting feedback from the public hopefully will make a difference and advocating for that in return.
Thank you, all right. We don't have any unfinished business, we'll move straight to new business. And we have a couple of procurement ordinance, which I have bill twenty three dash seventeen for discussion and a decision. City Administrator right now.
Well, it's a really short discussion, so there is the state regulated and put together some regulations on cities here in, in developing projects and procuring the materials for development of projects landscaping that a certain person had to be impossible material. And so the way the legislation was initially written, there was some confusion about who it applied to. So I went to a couple of presentations, I said, I think the mayor as well, and spoke to our city attorney, Mr. Kenny, about whether or not it applies. So the statute is written kind of wonky, it first says applies to cities over twenty five thousand in population. So I'm kind of thinking like, oh, great, nuts. But it is us, because the second part of it is for cities under twenty five thousand wearing a contract with a waste collector who also collects compost twenty six weeks of the year. They have to have an ordinance that complies with the legislation. And we do. So the, at, at a high level, what the ordinance requires is that Director Lomischewski, when he's putting together projects, ensures that he reaches out to certified compost dealers to buy compost as part of. So there's not really a lot of opportunity for conversation engagement on this topic because we're literally far to do it. But Mr. Kenny here, happy to answer any questions. The ordinance as written is a lift from M R C statute and will be placed into the procurement section of our code.
Councilmember Shaker?
Let's see. My, I guess my, my question relates to cost, and I did read the, I, I did read the bill and I realize that right now we're not projecting any addition problem. But as, you know, organic waste and fertilizer, is there possibly some ancillary costs? You know, the result of more sap pine or something like that, see, see any, anything like that? Evening game, Mayor, couple staff, this seems like a good conference. I think the question is fair, kind of unknown, I expect, and what we have seen there already is a lot of compost mixed into a lot of the materials in there. You know, project specific, you know, certain folks like certain places, you know. People use D John, some people use, you know, Red Bar and the, the, so there's there's that local layer, we usually get local in the event too, right? Burn some organic material locally, don't get any of the waste that's streamed outside of, yeah, into the dumps and try to use organic material for highly growing base materials. On site, it's just, there are some outs that's too either hard to get or we're gonna be disrupting the project, you can't even get out of it, there's some get out of jail free cards. But I'm not overly concerned about it.
Any other questions? I, I would make a note too that besides our compost, there's actually significant business requirements in businesses. Depending on the cubic yards of organic waste they produce each year or each month will need to be required to start composting. So one of the things we're gonna need to look at beyond this is our business facilities and changing code to require space for yard based compost. And so there will be retrofitting needed likely of some of our existing facilities in the city. But twenty eight percent of the greenhouse gases that come out of the landfill are from organics. That's one of the biggest, organics included is one of the biggest greenhouse generators in the world, bigger than automobiles. So this ordinance is a step in the right process to reduce any greenhouse gases in Washington State. So it's pretty wacky, but actually in the end, pretty impactful stuff.
Can, can businesses have the, the organic, we compost the off, you know, somewhere hollow way and.
Those are required to, certain businesses are required to. And actually, for those that don't know, the Grange Cafe is a one hundred percent stairways business in the city of Duval. And so they're really setting an example in our community and hopefully others for all.
So conclusion here, hoping for a council decision tonight on adopting board.
Councilmember Mercer?
Jodale twenty three seventeen, ordinance thirteen and fourteen, related to the conflict.
Second, any further discussion?
It's been moved in and seconded, the Jodale twenty three dash seventeen and a couple of requirements. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, and with that, unless there are objections, we are adjourned at eight oh nine PM. Thank you all.